All right, welcome everybody. Uh, we have some guests today. Um, so what I'd like to do if we can would be to just get through a couple of our quick business things. Um, you know, minutes and stuff and then I don't know Reggie, are you still here Reggie? Reggie was here minutes ago. Um, so. Those of you don't know, um, I think Reggie works. The land trust, Ashtaput Land Trust, is that right Pam?
Yes.
And he does quite a bit of work for food security in Bridgeport.
Bridgeport.
Yeah. So soon as he comes back, I don't know what his time schedule is, so I'd like to get him on the agenda. Early in case he wants to hop out and do other things. And then we can stay on and do all the rest of our stuff. So Reggie's back. Um, so let's. If we can just do a quick, uh, anybody want to move to approve last month's minutes?
I'll approve them.
All right, moves.
Second.
Any seconders Pam in favor? I, I, good, good. Let me just make a quick note of that. All right. Sorry, I'm taking. Minutes and I'm trying to run things. All right. So good. All right. So, um. Without any further ado, um. Reggie, you are a, uh, you, would you like to introduce yourself? And I sent around the, um. The PowerPoint that you had prepared for people to look at. So maybe some of us have a little bit of background if we had time to look at it yet. But if you want to just introduce yourself and a little bit about. Uh, what you do at the land trust and Bridgeport food rescue and all that good stuff. And you're muted.
Yeah, in this context, I'm not part of the land trust, but I do work at Ashtaput Land Trust. That's my like day job. Um, I could show you some stuff I do. It's probably easy to visualize. One second. So I do a bunch of, um. I do whatever the wind tells me to do. There's no real rhyme or reason outside of work. What I do, um, here's a. So I also do fridge for, I guess that's all like the most, um. So I got a series of community fridges around Connecticut. This one in, uh, this is the one in Bridgeport. It's located at two nineteen James Street. Um, we also have one in New Haven. This is at, um. Two eighty Vine Street in New Haven. And I have one at Hartford, working on one in Waterbury. We feed about a hundred twenty five people a day. Uh, we get three to five tons of food a week. We're not a nonprofit. So this is all done through like this. I, um, I used to have more power when I was more energy when I was younger. I'm an old man now, but it used to be like very aggressively like, hey, stop wasting food. There's, um, like the rest of this whole thing is all numbers that give like very direct numbers and lots of waste. Um, food security and whatnot, and I just use that over and over again. I had to stop in shops, the BJ's, all these places to get, um, food. So that's who I am. Um, uh, like I said, I also work at Ashtaput. That's my day job, but I'm here. Because through the conversations dealing with that, um. They say outside of a, they say outside of a bus, like a fridge is the best place to get a conversation going. So, um, use that information to do that. I had conversations. Bridgeport's been going on for about two or three years at this point. It's five minutes away from my house and, um, working on a land trust, I'm remote. So my office at times was the fridge and I just use the internet around me. Doing that, got a lot of information, um, in regards to food security problems that happen and how we could solve them. And this is effectively a crux of all that last two or three years. Working in coalition with other folks. Let me move zoom out of the way just so I could, uh. Talk. So yeah, what the crux is, is the food access advocate for CT. Before I usually talk about it, I like to give some context of why this was built. Um. Plainly speaking, uh, food justice and increasingly salience unit. So there's a food security in Connecticut from, um. The biggest food share networks to, um, nonprofits to individuals, food insecurity and getting access to foods are a big issue. Specifically speaking, it, um, when it comes to black, Latino or. Data Haven did a report last year in regards to increases in food insecurity. There was a thirteen percent increase in Latino, eleven percent or nine percent in black, eleven percent of people with kids at home. Altogether around half million, uh, hundred, including a hundred thirty one thousand. Which includes a hundred one thirty one thousand kids. Connecticut also is fourth in the nation for food deserts. Here's a. Who does a definition? And as you can see, it's a Greenwich to Putnam issue. It's not. A Bridgeport issue despite me talking from here. It's way bigger than an urban issue. Um, this is just some more numbers that. Given outline in regards to how it's not an urban issue, um, from rural towns, suburban towns, urban cores. Everyone's has lost jobs, used food banks or is worse off financially. Um. So yeah, what am I here for? I'd give you a bunch of numbers. Effectively, we're trying to create an office which helps combat, uh, the root issue of, um. Food insecurity in Connecticut, which is. It seems like there's a bill, there's six, a hundred sixty nine towns in Connecticut and there's a hundred sixty nine silos working on a hundred sixty nine solutions. This would be something to kind of combine those hundred sixty nine solutions into one office. Um, but what does that look like? Um, well, this, I currently have two bills over. There's currently two bills out. One is, uh, the Senate bill on the left-hand side, seven eight five, six, one, zero, three is the one in the House. They both say the same thing. Uh, what I'm about to tell you, they both like. If you read them, they both came from the same source document I wrote, which is effectively the same thing, which is this office. Um, so yeah, what does this office do? Well, first thing it does is build infrastructure, gets a census of current food insecurity throughout town by town level. Um, does the same, it does, uh, tells you amount of food deserts, distant travels, food rescue organizations, food rescued wasted. Also disseminated stuff by race, age, sex, things like that. Use this information to create a database. So for example, if I move out of Bridgeport, if I lose my job, move out of Bridgeport, end up in Waterbury, shouldn't take me like a day or two to figure out where, um. Where, how to get a meal. I should just be able to put my new address in one ninety made up lane at foodct.org or some site. And then it tells me one point two miles away to the food rescue organization, one point seven miles away. There's a, um. Grocery store, these groceries talks to Snap. Here's how you sign up for Snap. The area that your, um, that your address is in. Your subsidized school meals for your children, et cetera, et cetera. Um, number four builds on that. Uh, I'm first generation Haitian American. So all that internet stuff's great and all, but if it can't be used on a phone, it doesn't really help out people that I know personally need help. So number four is creating either like two eleven, press nine, something directly or creating its own hotline, which gives you like a, uh. Uh, all this information in regards to like, um. Yeah, all the like places to eat. Also. With the food rescue, I've noticed that, um, most people don't do it out of ill will. They're not like my trash can, can is empty. Let me just put some stuff in to fill it out. It's more or less like. People throw food out just because they don't know better. I hear more times and now like, I don't want to get sued as an answer more than just like my trash cans cold. So this is effectively just making statewide best practices. So everyone knows what's going on, what your liabilities are. Uh, this is an educational base. This is effectively telling you, here's how you save move food. Here's who you could do. Here's you go to, here are the organizations within five, ten, fifteen, whatever the segregated, um, area is. But, um, yeah, this helps, um. Bolster or combat food waste by just giving information out because that seems like half the problem. Uh, also craft policies, after your health, economic, cultural policies, things of that nature. There would also be a heavy investment, heavy, uh, focus in building community. Like, uh, working to support and help manifest communal efforts that envision creating environmentally sustainable and socially just food system. So, um, people like you, this would effectively like help. If you have a subdivision that does food specifically, this would be the person you talk to. Right now, if you have twelve questions, you have to talk to twelve different people, be it deep department that or. Yeah, Department of Ag, uh, consumer health, this, that, there's. There's a bunch of different avenues depending on what kind of sentence you have, but this would be like whatever conversation you have, this would be the first person you talk to. So you won't have to do all that Googling. You may not end up having a hot whole conversation with this group, but they would at least be able to shepherd you. As opposed to right now, it's just hours of Google before you find something. Google listservs, write emails, write, you're following the right person on Facebook. That's how food information passes on right now. Um. Sustainable food practices, kind of like that example I gave before in regards to like, there's not information. People say like, do self-sustainable group. Self-stable stuff. This would be investing in the education and making it more possible. So let's, even if it's like, um, container gardens for people like in urban areas or investments on. Raised garden beds in suburban or suburban areas. This would just be the group that focuses on figuring out what does what. Three, support in creation of mobile food truck programs. Um, with communities that have low levels of transportation. Bridgeport specifically is an example I could use off the top of my head. The East Denver Bridgeport, forty percent of, um. Forty percent of people don't have licenses. So food truck programs exist. Sorry, how am I trying to say this? So food truck programs that exist kind of come either once a month or once, uh, once every other week and it's forty five minute gap. So if you can't make it that, that one forty five on a Monday, you have to wait a month or two weeks to get food. This would effectively just help bolster that up. Because, um, some people don't have the option to get food. Like I was just mentioning forty percent of the Bridgeport don't have licenses. So getting a meal is like a whole day. So if you have a Saturday off, you work five days, Saturday's your day off. That whole Saturday is taking a bus to stop and shop to kind of get groceries because you're still taking the bus. Get home and then have a couple of days of groceries to hold you down. This is more attacking the core issue. Uh. Number four, my day job, I, I work at Ashtaput Land Trust. A lot of my focus right now is with schools. I've noticed that the rhyme or reason when it comes to schools, there's about four or five trees and two or three acres of straight up grass. We talk about farm to table a lot in a theoretical sense. This would be investing in making it less theoretical and more on the ground. Like science is taught at schools. You know, you want to teach kids science. You have a science class. You want to teach English. You have an English class. You want to teach kids about farming. I don't know why it's the only thing that's online. So this would be like use some of those acres to make greenhouses, raise garden beds, transform a space of viable land, et cetera, et cetera. Number five is, um. Again, that example, let's say I inherited forty acres in Waterbury and all I know how to do is farm. Shouldn't take me thirteen months to figure out like, how do I sell the groceries? How do I get food to farmers markets? What farmers markets are available, what their hours are? If I have access to food, what goes to what pantries or food banks? And this is effectively a same idea. Go to. Foodaccess dot C T slash I'm a farmer. Put your address in and it just tells you all that. Again, it should be something that's. Shouldn't be thirteen places to figure out thirteen different things and it shouldn't be listservs and groups and task forces to figure out all this information. It should just be. Rarely available. Um, six is work to implement healthy grocery stores and communities impacted by poverty and food insecurity. This is effectively just to, um, there's a monoculture in food, at least in Bridgeport. Stop and shop's great and all, but it doesn't work for everyone. So this would be like, if there's a community led one call, if there's a group that wants to do something. An NRZ or a, uh, I'm not really sure, or a sustainable group that wants to make grocery store. They would make the grocery store and this would be the group that helps them and it wouldn't have to be another stop and shop. It would connect everything said before, the groceries, the. Farmers and all this information to make it more. More, um, work melt better with the culture in the community. Um, and six, seven, eight are things that are going on. Seven is CT grow and eight is or was, um. End hunger CT. This office in theory would be doing this work. You wouldn't be talking, I wouldn't be talking about it on the slide. There'd be a squad splash page. So we all know what's going on with food. Again, conversations are on what list serve you on, what group you're on, what. You might just, half the time it seems like if you, you have to be in the right room, you physically have to be at a bar and someone's talking about it. You get information is easier than finding it online. So this is kind of an attack to stop that. Put everything in a centralized place. These next two slides are working with stakeholders. So effectively, if you get money from like university, community organization, whatever, you make a report. Um, this is a group that's accountable for reading it. Right now I've been on task force. I've been on a bunch of things. It seems like more times than not, we do the work, just have it put in some library that no one reads it. This was a group that would, um, be reading it and trying to make a plan out of the hundred sixty nine towns, hundred sixty nine plans. Um, everyone's been doing a lot of work over the last couple of years and it seems like you get high enough and there's a block. There's no one to talk to. This would be the person at the other side of the door. Five is, um. Food insecurity in college hovers around forty percent. Secretary of Higher Education admissions is their primary goal and. You know, keeping campuses safe and stuff like that. So they do worry about food security, but it's not number one. This would be like, um, the office that works with them to help combat this. This issue of a transient population that stays between three, four to eight months that are very, um, hungry. How this would be the group that worked with them. And then partner with industry leaders, et cetera, et cetera. And lastly, uh, internal accountability. I'm part of the Bridgeport Food Policy Council and, um. We don't really have constant conversations with the state food policy council, and I don't know any group like sustainable groups. There's not many places that do. They kind of talk upwards. So this would be the group that talks to all these cities. Again, if it effectively says if there's a state, a city recognized group, this is a group that would talk to them. So, um. Yeah. And then I just looked through other group, uh, programs that are going on, put them all in one place. So then, you know, if you need thirteen things, it shouldn't be thirteen sites. It should just be like. Backslash resources, foodct.gov backslash resources, and then everything's here. So, um, yeah, that's effectively the idea and the office, um. Sorry, I'm real bad with endings. So that's the end, y'all. Um.
Well, what can we do? That's the next, you had that last slide there, dear legislator.
Oh, yeah, that's effectively like, um. Oops, sorry. Points of access like, um, reach out to your represent, like if you do want to do this, reach out to your rep, local representatives and senators. This currently held then the human resource or human service committee. And we wrote a letter prompt, but this, um, these slides, there's twenty six points and there's never like. There's never the same point that catches someone because sometimes I talk to farmers and like, yeah, that's too hard. Or sometimes I talk to schools and like, yeah, that. So whatever, there is a prompt. So if you have, if you don't, if nothing calls you, you just use this. But if there's something specific that like, yeah, that makes a lot of sense. Uh, we asked to email that just because it's a very diverse problem and it needs a, it needs to be shown that there is a diverse problem that needs diverse solution. So. Yeah, as many problems as he has, throw it under to say it's this bill that you're trying to get them to do it. And then we try to attack it through that. Is a mentality that makes sense.
Yeah, question. Do you work with town halls at all?
Town halls? No.
See if they can implement anything or encourage anything.
Tom halls? I've never heard the name honestly.
Town, town halls.
Oh, town hall. I think it's a town hall. Um, do I work at town halls? Um.
Local.
Guards, like I work with this. Yeah, I guess I work with like. You mean city governments? Is that what you mean?
Yeah, it would be city, like city of Bridgeport. We have town in Trumbull, so. Town hall, city hall.
Do I work with city, um? Kind of, I guess. I'm, I'm not really sure how to answer. I mean, yeah, it's been to various town halls. I mean, this is not a bill. This is a state thing. So it doesn't work specifically on all. So. Yeah, there's been conversations in regards to like, what is like that number I said forty percent of Bridgeport doesn't know that area forty percent of Bridgeport. They were the ones who brought that idea up. That it needs to be done. So yeah, I'd say like. This was built with consideration of. State or city groups, but this isn't like. Yeah, I hope I answered. I'm not really sure how to answer. So yeah, we kind of.
Yeah. So this is a state sort of, the state gets to provide sort of a more of an overview and, and. Just organizing things on a state level rather than piecemeal at the, at the city level, right? Is what you're saying.
Effectively, because on the city level, like, um, it doesn't matter what city you're in. At some point. You have to talk to state level and there's no state person. There's no one to talk to state. You either have to like Department of Ag handles it sometimes, but they're under the. They're oversaturated just because of stuff becoming legal. Like, you know, the world that we're living in and urban farming renewal and all this stuff. So. This is effectively just making an office a hundred percent concentrated when it comes to food.
So Mari and Mary, sorry, Mary, Mari and Mary have their hands up. Mari, would you like to go first?
Yeah. Hi Reggie. Nice to see you again. Um. I just wanted to just make the quick comment and maybe this addresses the connection with our town hall. But, um, our Trumbull Sustainable Youth Group does some advocacy for legislation in general, and we have a tab on our town. Um, sustainable webpage. So I'd be willing to add this there if you think that's appropriate. I just wanted to double check. Um, and we can share the sample letter on our, um, social media. The youth can take the lead on that if you'd like, but I think it's a great cause and. Glad to see you again.
Yeah, would love to if, um, if it's appropriate for you. I think that's why I'm here to see if like, if it works for y'all, if it works for y'all, I would love all that. Um. But yeah, definitely like the youth is the future and, um, I got a job. So I'm less hungry than these kids. So it's more for them then. So ideally I'd get to be on board just because I think they are the people that it affects mostly, but. Yeah, to say, yeah, sorry.
Is there a timeframe that they have to, um, that the letters have to be submitted? I think that's been one of my challenges as like the adult, I'll call it liaison with the youth is it's like I get emails on a Friday that there's public comment like. For instance, today there was public comment on the, um, the children, um, committee on, um. Composting in schools and it was like scurrying to get your data together. So, um, do you have a timeline?
It's kind of built like that on per, like they give us five days heads up. So like, um, that's just how the system is like, we have right now two bills that we're waiting for one to become one. But realistically, like, because I've done policy before, like last year, how they work is like, it's a fractured system. So what you're dealing is just how they do it. They give you. If I figure out on Thursday, they'd be like, all right, next Thursday, you guys got a public meeting and, uh. A public hearing in, um, in Hartford. So they never give you the heads up. That's why it's always a big issue. So, um. That didn't really answer a question, but that just like highlighted like, no, it's not you. That's, that's an issue we all have. Like we all just. We all just check our phones, wait for emails until we hear that something's about to pop up.
Boom could be anytime. So Mary.
Is on the list when you have dates and we'll try to push it through.
Exactly.
Definitely. Yeah. Once I hear something, I'll shoot out to you.
Mary's got her hand up too. Sorry.
Yeah, I'm just curious. Yeah. Is this the first time that you're proposing, um, this bill or was it in session last year?
No, this is the first time I'm proposing this bill.
Right. We have, we, we just happen to have pints in policy in Trumbull tonight with, uh, Senator Moore and new, um, Representative Sarah Kitt. And then our first selectman. So, you know, um, if you happen to be available around seven o'clock tonight, we're at, we're at prime one eleven. But I'm certainly happy to bring it up. I'll print these out and, uh, bring it up. I'm assuming you've already spoken to, um, to Maryland.
Yeah, she supports, um, the Senate, but like there's two bills there. She, there's two bills, there's Senate bill and House bill. She brought up the House bill, though, with, um, Dorinda Boar. So she did five. Yeah. But I would love to. You said prime two eleven. I could be there.
Prime one eleven. Prime one eleven. Yeah, seven o'clock. And then I'm sorry, then just one last, um, for April. Um, we, my husband brings that we bring the containers to Fridgeport and, you know, we brought things in the past. Um, and we kind of on this group even had a discussion about it's hard to promote. To people to bring things down because they're all, they're, you know, there's always that worry, is somebody going to bring something down? It's been sitting out on their count, you know, on their counter for four hours. After a party or, you know, something like that. And then there is a concern. So what are the rules around bringing to Fridgeport?
Um. I'm not sure like what time you've been there, but there's usually like Ada and a few other people inside the church who like take, depending. So inside, I don't know if you've physically been in there, but there's like a few tables. So I say bring, we just say generally like. Show the same respect that you'd show yourself. That's usually the message we bring, like donate what you'd want to eat. And then we just filter it internally. So that's, um. Bring whatever, I, I don't say bring whatever, bring something that you'd want to eat yourself and then bring it to the church. And then we have like. There's always between six to eight people inside the church. You're breaking stuff down or putting them in those little containers to put in the fridge. So there's always people there just doing like quality control stuff. But we ask you do a little quality control beforehand, but.
Yeah, you would, you would, you would hope so, but you always wondered and you'd hate to have some, you know what I mean? Somebody in error. So I just didn't want to. Promote and then have an issue, but yeah, that's a good way to put it.
Yeah, but no, this should be good. Like, um, between ten to three, what is it? Ten to three or four, whenever school goes out, there's always people there. Schools usually like. We usually run by half days because everyone's a parent and stuff like that. But like between one and three is usually more there and they all do quality control.
Yeah, it's, it's amazing. You guys are doing an amazing job. So thank you so much.
Thank you. April, you had your hand up?
Yes, I did. Hi. Um, just from the school front, I, I love everything that you kind of mentioned here. And just so you know that we've been actively trying to get some of these things across our schools here. Um, I think I'm hopeful that in the next couple of years, at least at our middle school, our. Family in consumer science curriculum may change. And I know the big pushes that you could do like a farm to table, feed to table kind of, um, thing. So the students really see it in place. Um, but like you said, every kind of. Every kind of initiative always has a challenge and the big challenge that we've kind of had here. Which I agree with and I understand, yet it's frustrating is that if we wanted to create a food garden or a pollinated garden or something like that on campus. It's always, well, who's going to take care of it five, six years from now, when that group isn't in place anymore? When the leadership kind of falls through. So just wanted you to know that yes, I'm on board with, with everything that you pretty much said here. However, we could support, um, you know, but we, we are working on things here slowly, but shortly.
Yeah, no, in my day job, we have the same thing, like, um, the infrastructure part. I think we just started doing like, um, some kind of junior ranger program or teaching kids about it because we are Atlanta. So we're just teaching the kids about like. We have twenty two hundred acres, Ashtuck. So we're teaching, we're bringing them out in general to do the twenty two hundred acres, but then we connect them back to Bridgeport schools. So we're like. Yeah, it's cool. And all you could be in East and all these like nice rich towns, but there's nature everywhere and they all need the same amount of help. So there's a common, so that's how we're doing it. But it is like, uh, if we don't have that, like you said, six, three, six, three months out of the year, there's no one there and it just becomes like a big old weed fest. So it is a consideration always put in mind.
Pam, you also had your hand up?
Yeah, um, just to. Follow up on what April said. I'm newly certified master gardener with the Yukon program. And if you ever could get a plot of land, either in the city or at schools. You could ask the master gardener program for volunteers to help you and that's an annuity. Uh, master gardeners are required to volunteer for community outreach. And they have to do a certain number of hours for summer. So potentially tap into that. There's hundreds, thousands of, uh, gardeners associated with the program. And they would become, I was volunteering up in New Haven at their leaf garden. It's exactly what, what you're talking about here. So if you ever want to talk about that, I'm happy to talk about that with you offline.
Yeah, I think I talked to what's her name, Jackie Kowalski or something. She does some stuff at GVI in Bridgeport with the, and Becca Toms, maybe? I forgot the name, but there's a few folk, but that is an idea that's being brought up as it is like evolves. So I would love to talk, let me. Got a long last name and Ashtuck's a long name also. So it takes me a while to write this whole thing down, but here's my email.
All right. You can always come back to us.
That's true. Mel works here. Like I work with Mel or, uh, so, but that's my email.
Yep.
But definitely.
Marie, you have a question? Uh, hands raised?
Yes, I do. Thank you. Um, Reggie, I'm so happy to. Hear about your efforts and it's, it's been on my heart for a long time. Um, a few things. Uh, first is what church should we bring? Food to, what is your, you know, primary goal or focus?
It is, um, the fridge is at two nineteen James Street. So it's Kingdom, Kingdom Builders. I'll write it down. It's Kingdom Builders Impact, um. Impact Ministries, uh. Sorry, I was right to nineteen James. So it's a Kingdom Builders Impact Ministries at two nineteen James Street in Bridgeport, Connecticut. Um, that's a specific like one with the fridge, but, um, if you have like your church, if you do something, I live. Pretty, my job's outreach. I'm just always around the wind. So if your church does something, I'm always available to pick it up. So. I say specifically, if you want to drop it off at like where the fridge is at two nineteen James Street, but if you give me like a heads up, I could always come by.
Now I look forward to, to working with you in the future. Um, um. I don't know if you've been in contact with the Green Village Initiative, which is based in Bridgeport. And to address, I forget who mentioned in terms of, um. The school programs because they, they had that. And it was very successful for a number of years, but. You know, obviously. Teachers are overwhelmed and so. They recently had to stop that gardening program, but they still support, um, neighborhood. Uh, gardens and they offer, um, food markets and things of that sort. So, um, yeah, that was. You know, a wonderful program. We, we support them. Um, even now, you know, we think they, they're doing wonderful things in the community. Um, the other thing I just wanted to say is that. My husband actually got me included or involved in Green Village Initiative. He works for Home Depot. And Home Depot provides, um, support. In terms of materials and volunteers for, um. Requests that come in. And so that's how we learned about Green Village Initiative. Um, he's been part of building garden beds and, you know, all sorts of stuff and. Because Home Depot has, you know, obviously stores all across the, uh, the country and. Across the state. I just wanted to make sure everyone knew that that is a, a possible resource if, you know. When you have a documented need. That they might be able to help you not only with materials, but also with volunteers. So. Um, but I look forward to, to speaking with you further and thank you so much again.
Oh, anytime. And yeah, I, um, I love GVI. I see Ellie all the time. Like, um, I think I saw him like yesterday or two days ago. I hang out with Ellie and.
Ellie, I love her.
Yeah, GVI is about like, um, ten minutes away from like Fridgeport. Couple of years ago was planned in GVI. Like I was doing some. Couple of summers ago, we were doing, what was it? Um, like, uh, we were breaking down pallets to make. Garden beds in front of houses in Bridgeport. We're getting dirt from GVI and some plants from mothers of maybe this group, like a bunch of groups. And, um, GVI was where we did that and planning for Fridgeport. So yeah, GVI. Hold a place in my heart. Love them all.
Yeah, I thank you.
Yeah, thanks Reggie. Really appreciate it. Um, any other thoughts on, you know, next steps for us? Uh, anything else other than what we've already discussed?
Um, I will, um, send you an email because right now, like I said, there's two bills that are combining into one and President's Day kind of slowed it down a little bit. So we're. Kind of just waiting for, to figure out what the new number bill is before we tell people to decide, write something to bill in effect of like. Hey, support bill XXX because it might not even exist next week. So, um. I think I have Mr. Bill Chin's email. That's how I got Mel's email. So I was gonna write a whole prompt and shoot it out to them when I, uh, when we get the number, but we. When we get the number, but we have a pretty general prompt. We're effectively just waiting on the number to plug it in. But it would show um. It says usually reach your reps and this is how, this housing, the housing services. So if you email your reps and housing services, it'd be appreciated or. If you have a chance for public testimony, whatever your capacity is, the letter will say for different capacities, little access points.
Sounds great. Well, really appreciate it Reggie. This is, it, it really is up our alley. You know, sustainability covers a lot of things and certainly um. Food uh, issues, food security is certainly one of those. So really appreciate what you're doing and, and thanks for sharing with us.
Thank you so much. Appreciate the time and I'll talk to you all soon.
All right. Have a good one. Thanks. All right, everybody. That was good. Um, any further thoughts on that before we head on, move on our? Agenda? All right, um. Forget the minutes. All right. So I'm going down the agenda here and I, under waste reduction, I have. Uh, the first item I have is under recycling and. The Wish Cycling Handout. Um, we were talking about making copies, color copies of that. Um, who wants to talk to that issue?
Again.
Yeah, sure.
I gotta, I just priced up quickly, just online and I came up with, I think the lowest price was nine cents for color copies, but. Um, do we have a idea of if we can print them, how many we would need, where would we be distributing them? I mean, just not really sure what avenues we have agreed upon as a group would be the best way to spread the word. And it doesn't have to only be like flyers, but.
Was George going to have it sent out electronically, make it available in the town hall? I wasn't really clear on what his next steps were. Do we know?
It is on the town website and I believe it's printable. Um. They did e-blast it when it was initially made.
They did.
Once, right? Mary, do you remember? I think it was e-blasted originally unless I'm confusing it with the glass, but I think. Once, but. Yeah, it did go, it did go once. And it's funny, I actually had to look back at it because I, I didn't even see it. Um, so I had to go back and type in to see if it got sent, but I know we were hoping it would also go out through the haulers. Um, and then with that, the last piece that, um, you know, we were discussing was the contamination. Um, with some of the, the, you know, the ones that they've been frequently finding in Trumbull. So I don't know if you had sent to George and Cindy. Um, anything asking about that, if we, if we were going to kind of uh, you know, pop those to the top or, or anything like that. And then again, get it sent out because it sounded like an entire, at least one entire load had to be. Um, tossed because it, it was too contaminated to be recycled. I just don't know how to highlight that anymore. I feel like the flyer is so neat. It covers everything like, yes, the plastic bags are tinglers or hangers or tinglers. Things under two inches across fall through. Um, glass contaminates it, but unless it's prohibited, it's like. Yeah, I know, it may even be just, just like the talking point as it comes out, like in the subject line about, you know, these are, you know. And, and yet, well, the crazy side of it, it actually costs more to recycle as we know. Uh, but uh, unfortunately, but um, you know, maybe even something like that. Because we know that, you know, we have the same people that are liking our comments or, or asking for things or printing out. And it's, you know, but I mean, I even know, I'm sitting here going like, oh my God, I don't remember. Do I recycle that or do, you know, and then I go look it up. So. Can we highlight it on the town like homepage for a little, like maybe for Earth Week month, for the month? Like let's have it available, reminders of proper recycling or um. But that's a good point Pam, to follow up with George maybe and see what avenues he wants. Cause he, I think I was pretty um, clear that he wanted to contact the haulers himself. Right? Did you get that impression?
I also, I also get the impression and, and I'm not being cynical, I don't think. But I get the impression that folks who care about what goes in that recycle bin are the ones that are going to read it. And people who are just like, I do what I, what I do and that's all I'm gonna do. I, I never, you know, so we've, I think like we've done our part in creating this very clear and. Concise, two-page document that's easy to read. Um, and if we could just make sure that it is as available as possible for anyone who wants to get it. Then that's our, I think, that's all we can be asked to do. But it would be good to check in with George again to see if the haulers are going to take it and print it and send it out or make it available on both websites. Cause I think it was only on one, right?
Um, yeah, our, our WS sent out their own. I'm not sure about the others, but it was, it wasn't the same one that we, we used theirs and then updated.
Right, right, right.
And then one, I guess April, you, the, the um, education queen. Um, and, and Mari, the same thing with kids still in the school system. But what is, what do they do? So when my kids were there a million years ago, we went to the garbage museum. And it was, I still remember that. It was like just the best field trip ever. And it really was like, wow. Um, do they do that anymore? Do they, what do they do in the way of recycle and garbage education? Because I mean, if we, even if we start at the low level and keep banging it to the kids who then bring it home to their parents. And that's usually the way it happens is start young and they're the one, you know, like piloting something at the school. Um, in the younger grades as opposed to starting at high school because by then you're lost.
So to kind of answer your question, um, I think they used to go to the garbage museum as you've kind of stated. But due to COVID there, I mean, that, that was a couple of years ago now and we're just kind of coming out of that in regards to field trips. Um, it may or may not come back on the docket. Um, it also needs to fall within the curriculum and curriculums are changing. So I'm not sure if it falls within the curriculum anymore. Um, someone in the school system trying to plan events, I could tell you calendars are tight if we wanted to do some at schools. But I don't think it's, I don't think it's a bad idea. Um, I do wish. You know, I don't know. I do, I do think that some people, like I can speak for, like my kids go to Middlebrook and, and Middlebrook School just in general. Have parents who do better with things that are in paper than if they were online. Um, there was a way to distribute through. You know, the schools to get paper home to students and or um, in a different fashion, I think better than just, well, you know, it's on the town website. You know, I live in town and I'm, I'm fairly educated, but I'm not on the website often. Um, I wouldn't say it's necessarily user friendly. Um, and I think that discourages a lot of people who just don't know the ins and outs of that. So the more paper copies. You get to people and educate them and answer their questions, the better off we may be.
But April, along those lines, actually that was Vicky's suggestion when we met with her about sending information home. She said the best way is through the schools.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, if, the thing is, who's going to pay for the copies? You know, once the copies are made, each school would be more than happy to give you a list. You put them together, how many kids per class? And then they just put it in every teacher's mailbox and eventually by the end of the week, everyone gets it and it goes home. Um, you know, elementary schools were probably talking one, two. Three thousand copies.
Yeah, I just, I just priced up seven thousand copies at nine cents unless I'm doing the math wrong. It's six hundred and thirty dollars.
So if this is.
Not terrible.
You know, no, it's. Um, but if this is something that I, I mean, I think it's a great thing. Do, one, do we have the money? Two, is a town going to pay for it? Are the haulers going to be involved? Are people going to take a part of this? Take, take a piece of what we have to pay for to get it out. I think it's a great message, but. You know, we don't necessarily have a budget.
We, we do have our, we do have our, um, um, oh my God, I'm losing my brain. Um, our revenue account. So we do have money in that. I'm, I, I sent an email to Maria, but it is, it is budget season. So I know everybody's really taxed on time. Um, but we probably have about two thousand in that account. That, that came from Bay State, Help See and Planet Earth. I know there's other funding through NIPS, but you know, that's kind of in George's court to see what they end up. How they end up deciding to use that.
Yeah, just my, just my two cents, guys.
And maybe it is just even try, start with the elementary schools, you know, elementary, maybe even middle, you know, so we hit them through eighth grade. And, and skip the high school at this point or, or just try, uh, you know, sending electronically. I don't, you know.
If we're going to get the copies and we also want to hit, you know, some of the, the other communities in town, it doesn't mean we can't, you know, go to some of the community residency and have them in there. Common areas and or, you know, be outside stop and shop for a day, which now they're allowing again to kind of talk to people and educate them. I think they like and enjoy that interactive piece that you don't just get from a flyer. It doesn't answer all your questions. You might have a random one that is easy to answer, but it's not on the paper.
Yes, I got back days for, um, we stopped during COVID and then last year it was booked immediately for being outside of Stop and Shop to collect for the pantry. Um, and Stern also, Mari, if they do have an interest there, I meant to check with you on that. But anyway, but we're, we're back to do like a one day a month and that might be the same thing, good opportunity to have information out on this. Cause that's where people are bringing their, their cans back, you know, or their bottles. If they find out, hey, the high school does this, I don't need to bring them back here. And then also for the plastic wrap and things like that. So it could certainly, you know, certainly having a table out for education is a great idea.
What do you want to do? Uh, as far as deciding on the copies, do you want to check with George and see if the um. Haulers have, have sent it out to anybody or do we just want to go ahead and say, let's make a bunch of copies, put them in the. Schools, send them to the schools, get approval from the schools to submit them.
Yeah, how do we get approval? Like, is there one person, April, we can go to to get approval for like all the elementary and middle schools?
Dr. Semmel.
Yeah, I think we should try for all the schools, high school too and just. Go for it. I, I mean.
If I can jump in, I don't know if I'm. If I'm, um. If you can hear me, but I would really. Hate to have you waste a lot of money on paying for color flyers. And that's just my, my two cents. I think, I forget who said it, but in terms of. The education efforts and the online efforts, you know, whether it's. The email groups, the Facebook groups, we can do that without expense. The education in schools, especially, you know, in the elementary schools. You know, I'm a semi-employed, semi-retired person. I would love, love, love. To go into different schools and have a program that I can talk to them about how important these things are. And so I just don't want a lot of money to be wasted on flyers that, you know. Sadly, we all know, they might be red, but I don't think they would be worth the expense. I think you can use the, uh, your finances in, in different ways and in more effective ways. So that's my two cents. I'll step back now.
You know, we have, what'd you say our account balance was there, Mary? A couple thousand?
Um, yeah, it should be probably just, just under two thousand. I'm not sure how many print cartridges we have, but based on. Help See and Bay State, it should be up about that.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we've spent much money on anything at this point, right? We're just collecting money. We haven't spent it. So the only other thing I would. If we could get the town to send out, you know, a similar, the town did years ago send out that flyer. Um, I still have it on my, uh, on my refrigerator. That says what's in, what's out. And I don't know when, how long ago it was that was sent out, but if. The town could do that again would also be helpful, but I think sending that through the schools is probably. Gets the kids talking about it, gets the, um, you know, gets the conversation going. So. What do y'all think about that?
Yeah, I think we would want to, you know, go in and talk to some of the schools. That might be a, a great way to expand what we're doing.
Pam, you had your hand up?
Yeah, um, well, this is kind of jumping ahead, but host another recycling webinar is on here. And it does, um. Beg the question for this as well, do we want to think about hosting events again around Earth Week like we did a couple of years ago? And have this be one of the sessions? I don't know that I have the bandwidth for, what did we do last year? Uh, not last year, the year before, whenever it was, seven events. I don't think I have the bandwidth to organize seven. But we could certainly organize a couple around key things. And I'm wondering if the library is hosting in-person events again. That we could broadcast with Trumble TV. If we don't want to do it, just zoom on our own. We have time to plan it. I mean, not even March yet.
Yeah, I looked, I looked at their Earth Day calendar a week or so ago. I didn't see anything like really planned. Um, but that's not to say nothing would be added, but I think if we give them enough time, you know, to try to work something with them, that would be a great idea.
Are they hosting events again there?
Um, I believe so. Yeah, they have them, I mean, they have them listed, uh.
Cause I remember, I mean, that was the first time I think I met you was Mel's Pollinator Pathway event. That was February of twenty twenty.
Right before everything stopped.
Right before everything stopped. And then the following year, we did the Earth Week virtual events every night. So maybe there's a way of kind of doing a mini version of that this year. Having recycling versus Wish Cycling being one of them. I think Mari, you're Zoom with Cheryl Baldwin, Cheryl. Baldwin from, um, the state was fantastic and it was well attended. So maybe we could do that again.
I don't know if she would do in person and she might, but I just know she, most of them are Zooms, but. Ready to go.
Yeah, maybe we, maybe we could just do like three different events and one of them would be in person and I don't know.
I'm in Pam, if you. Offline.
All right, well, we don't have to decide this now. We've taken up a bit of time on it. Um, but it seems like it's probably, might be something to try to coordinate a few things. If we're gonna print out that flyer, send them out to the schools and then try to maybe work some Earth Day uh, or educational. Webinars around it might be good, huh?
And Mari, just offline, I'll send you the name of um. Gentleman who lives in Trumbull but has his own printing business and he is on the Conservation Commission. He might be able to give you a better price than that.
Yeah.
Maybe we could try an e-blast first through the schools too and see if we get any inquiries with questions. If they're willing to do that. It's not really a school-related topic. It might be more challenging than paper, but we'll see. Through the, I would say maybe just through the PTAs at least for that part of it. So the school, you know, cause I know the school typically wants things that are just school. And then if we fall for the flyer, you know, that's fine. It goes to the, you know, regular.
Yeah, okay.
Right, I would, I would say that before we make a bunch of copies for distributing to the school, we definitely want to get approval from. Dr. Semmel and whoever else, right? And then.
Yeah, I think we'll check with George first and then go from there. How's that sound? I can circle that.
You know, I can, I can ask John to see what, what he would, would cost for, you know, several thousand copies. You know, if he does copy, like I'll ask him.
All right. Sounds good. Um. We talked about recycling, holding another recycling webinar, um. Food scrap initiative, anything uh, shaken there Pam? Would, I think that's your.
Nothing shaking. There seems to be some tremors though around the state. I'm seeing more and more articles about food scrap initiatives around the state and how important it's getting. And I was encouraged by some of the stuff I saw from George recently, a couple of emails in the past couple of months. It looks like he's doing a little footwork on his own to see what would be involved in putting a space at our transfer station. But nothing seems imminent, but it doesn't seem hopeless. Does that make sense? So if we can get something up and going for the spring, um, you know, we could certainly set up tables at. Farmers markets and tell our story as long as we have a place at the transfer station to bring all that stuff. And we talked about a, as kind of a substation somewhere, maybe the, uh, where the farmer's market is. But I think that we should go transfer station first, substation later. So it's coming. I think it's coming. It's just a matter of time.
Good, thank you. Um, the litter campaign, uh, Mari, is that you?
That was me. I just wondered. If we could put together, and I don't know who we is, a subgroup, could put together some talking points. To start an anti-litter campaign around town. And as you know, April, Mari, Mary, whoever it is. You know, if you're out there walking around in the parks and on the streets, you see, we are just loaded with litter at all times. Bottles, cans, cups, single-use plastic. It is so discouraging and it starts with education. And it starts with education. I feel like, um, you know, if, if I were a police officer, my hand would be numb from writing tickets for people throwing bottles and cans out their car windows. But maybe we just start in a gentler way, um, create something that we can talk to the Trumble Times about. Um, maybe get some signage made and put around town. I don't, I know that signage is kind of frowned upon in certain parks, but it's really, we're a DEFCON two with this. It's, it's over the top how much garbage there is. Just me picking it up. I don't have room in my car for it. That's how bad it is. And, um, I just wondered if anybody would be on board with, with helping me out with that.
Yeah, I, I see April's hands up.
Yeah, and yes, I would too. I would be happy to.
I can't sign up on Mari's list unfortunately, so just put me on whatever. I can never, I can never do it. It's just, it just, it's, it's read only. So, but I'm happy to help.
Well, I think we have a new person at the Trumble Times and Eddie, is it Eddie? Something?
Eddie Martinez. He used to be here. He was back here.
He's gone already.
He's gone already?
Yeah.
I just got, I just got his welcome email a couple of weeks ago.
Gone.
Oh, do you know who replaced him? Or are they still?
Uh, I do.
Actually Amanda had given me two names. I don't remember who the other one was.
Okay, we don't need to decide that right now. But I'll, I'll start working on. And, you know, I'll send an email around and anybody who wants to play can play in a subgroup on that. I know I'm probably gonna get my heart stomped on it because I'm not a successful little B. But I, if you're not part of the solution, you're part of the problem, right?
Sounds good. Um, next on the agenda, sir. What's that?
I'm gonna put his, the reporter's name in the chat. I don't know.
Oh, okay.
So I'll put it in the chat.
Thank you. I have next on the agenda, Plastic Wrap Trex Campaign. All right.
All right. So, so I'm just waiting for the schools to kind of close up. Um, April fifteenth will be the last day that schools can enter, um, poundage for their school competitions. And at that point, then I will enroll the town into a town-wide competition. So we can start advertising that, you know, probably like the start of April and maybe, um, you know, during Earth Week, start it during week, advertising it and then start collecting make. They have, um, I think a six-month run and then that would close this out right around the time the schools would pick back up. I just don't want to overlap the school versus the towns and the schools have an option for a chance of winning as well.
Got it.
That's definitely in the works and will be coming.
All right. Sounds good.
April, how's Middlebrook doing? Cause, uh, uh, the high school had to pause collecting for a little until they could get some of the students um, on a schedule for dropping it off because the head of the environmental club was doing all of the runs and it was getting too cumbersome. So unfortunately.
So Middlebrook is actually kind of like on an upswing this year, um, cause we got the cafeteria on board by, um, being at back to school night, I ran into the cap, the head, um, lady over there at Pam, who's amazing. And so we've been working together about collections and I pick up from there. And, um, so we are on an upswing. So if the collections aren't going anywhere from the Saturdays that were at Trumble High, then we could definitely use that. Um, and that should kind of really help us out a lot.
Yeah, definitely, definitely.
Okay, awesome.
All right. Um, next I have on the agenda is the Refill Not Landfill Campaign and Mary just sent that around, uh, yesterday, I think.
Yeah, or even today. I should have said it sooner. Yes, I sent it to Mari to take a look at before, um, but before going to Rena, this seems like an easy one. I don't know if we'll get a ton of participation, but, uh, Westport's been doing it. If you take a look at their Sustainable Westport, uh, Facebook page, you'll see that they pretty active campaign on it. So basically it's asking people to bring your own reusable mug instead of using the plastic or the styrofoam, uh, cups when you go in for coffee, tea, hot shot, but you know, whatever your choice of beverage is. Um, and to hit some of the locals. So I didn't have any success in calling Starbucks or Dunkin' to see if they have anything. Uh, you know, or would they be interested? But the other ones, obviously, the, um, I'm gonna say Marie's, um, Trumble Cafe, Plaskos, uh, Jay Bagels, you know, all those best edibles, the smaller places to see if they would have an interest. Uh, and then it's, uh, Westport had kind of turned it into a, um, like a nice little campaign where if you go to any of the participating um, businesses and you scan a QR code, uh, you get put into a drawing if you, if you, you know, if you buy five plus um, beverages in a month and you get put into that. So it kind of, it's nice. It encourages people to go out. I mean, I have my instant every morning myself. Um, but it encourages people to go out, you know, go local and then to also drink, drink responsibly, um, by using reusables. Um, so one.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, no, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, as someone who picks up, picks up these cups, if there's no financial incentive for them to use a reusable, they're not gonna do it. So it'd be nice to have some sort of a, like you said, you know, buy five, get one or get a quarter off your drink every time or something like that. We need retail participation to make it work.
Well, it seems like the, from data that I've looked at and I talked to Marianna's, uh, pantry when I was in one day. That it's not so much, people aren't, people typically aren't going to remember to bring it if they're, if they're going to get money off per se. Like she was doing like a quarter off or something. And it, I, that's, doesn't seem to be the real draw. The draw is if you charge more and you say my cup is a dollar, but it's gonna be a dollar twenty-five if you don't bring your own mug. So it's, it's that negative, unfortunately, negative reinforcement. Um, so I thought some, some west, you know, Westport seemed to be getting off to a good start. I thought it might be worth trying for a gift card incentive. Now again, that would come out of our special revenue account funds that we have. Westport was doing a hundred, but we're not Westport. So I thought maybe it's like a fifty-dollar gift card, um, you know, at like another, like at any of the other restaurants or anything like that in town or, or, um, uh, you know, Porsha's Stores, you know, just something else, not just the, the cafes themselves, because we're hoping to encourage people to go there regardless. Um, but you know, I thought maybe a six-month trial of doing it and hope people just kind of get used to it and some good signage in the, in the cafes. And I know it's like knocking your head. It's gonna be like the litter campaign. We'll be the ones going there with our cups. And, uh, and that may be it, but I thought it was worth a shot. So I was just curious what people thought. And, and again, obviously we go to Rena first and I was hoping Economic Development Commission, um, would be interested in helping as well. Because part of, uh, part of their mission is kind of going around engaging, you know, how the, how our, um, uh, local establishments are doing. So. And that's it.
I think anything that reduces the single-use cups on the street is worthwhile.
Oh, I should, I should mention Westport had, not Westport, um, Middletown. Uh, they did a, they did a harder one to implement where you had to bring a little passport with you and get it stamped. It seemed a pain in the neck. And I think that was one reason it wasn't that successful. Um, also it was their recycling coordinator was in charge. So she didn't have anybody to help her with going around or publicizing, but they did get a grant for fifteen hundred dollars for mugs. And they were, um, you know, that was part of the promotion. Uh, Westport bought mugs and they were selling them. And so it had the Sustainable Westport on it. For us, I just figured that's, if we tried to get a grant, it would be, I was hoping again, launch would be around Earth Day. We're doing everything at Earth Day, but that would take us down the road a bit on trying to get a grant. And also I just think, you know, everybody has a million reusables. It just seemed to add one more layer to it. So I was just kind of going the simpler route, but. Is that Kim O'Rourke in Middletown? Yes. Oh, did you connect with her? I did. She got back to me. She was on another meeting I was on with her. Yeah, before that. She seems great, but she's, she's got a lot on her plate. So.
Yeah, okay.
So thoughts on that before it goes to Rena? People want to take a look at what I sent and see if you have any better ideas or uh, anything around it. And I think instead of like, you know, reinventing the wheel, pretty much, uh, using the, the type graphics that Westport did. They seem, they seem they're very well done. And, uh, um, you know, that might just be the way to go.
Yeah, let's, I, I, I'd like the opportunity to, uh, read what you sent around, which I didn't yet. And then I think it kind of goes hand in hand with the litter campaign in a way. So.
Yeah, that's, I mean, it seems like a. Go ahead.
I was just gonna say it'd be good to snoop around the web to see what towns have done and who's been successful in this endeavor. I know it's a stubborn problem. But.
I think, I think the one thing COVID had slowed people down because I wasn't able to find, um, to find many. Um, I thought Wilton had done something, but I didn't see anything, uh, on them. Um, but I know like Starbucks had started something, but it was this whole policy of, of, you know, putting the cup inside a mug and passing it and all of that. Uh, and what, what, uh, Westport also did, which I didn't mention, which was smart, was that they first went to their, um, the health department to make sure that they were okay with everything. And so they have a piece that was written up. So I think that's a, a good idea also to make sure the health department is, you know, on board, um, with that as well. So, but, um, so, you know, if people want to take a look and then just let, you know, you can do reply all or just get back to me, whichever. We'll see where we land and if, and if we want to go for that, then, um, you know, we can send Rena's way and, and get her thoughts. Then there's also a, um, there's also a, not, I'm not sure how full it is now, but there was a pretty complete list of, um, uh, businesses in Trumbull that, that we could also, you know, send to. Um, a final thing I was thinking was for our first responders, if we wanted to do anything a little extra with that or just highlighting through the town, you know, officer so-and-so was the one that was picked or, you know, just something like that. So it kind of adds a little more, you know, rah rah. So, and that was my one minute talk, which took ten. Sorry about that.
There we go. Thanks, Mary, for sending that around. That's all I have under the, um, waste reduction. I know, um, Randy Post, you, you joined us here for the first time and hopefully you got a lot of, uh, new information to, if you're, again, we, if you want to help on any of these, um, let us know, let Richard know. He'll, he'll let us know and we'll connect you with anybody who's working on any of these things. So you can see we got a lot going on. In the waste reduction. All right. So thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Randy called Mari, uh, just before the meeting. So I haven't heard the outcome or anything, but, uh, cause she's involved with, um, recycling at her synagogue and, you know, she's gotten, uh, the two of us to recycle all um, a plastic wrap. And what I thought wasn't very much is a big chunk of our recycle bin is now in a big plastic clear bag, which, you know, we, we bring to Stop and Shop. Have any drops for film wrap drops besides Stop and Shop?
Yeah, I think Big Y has it too. Um, anybody else? No?
We want to get credit for it. So make sure.
Well, when I bring it to Stop and Shop, I just put it in the thing, which I did today and I noticed a bunch of other crap in there, you know, talk about contaminated. Everything gets cross-contaminated. It's rather frustrating, but, um, yeah, we do the, um, the, the monthly, at the recycled monthly recycle drive, if you want to, uh, help out at that, Randy, um, we collect, you know, all kinds of stuff, including Trex and plastic wrap. And we bring that actually around the back of Super Stop and Shop by the loading dock. I think it is there, uh, where we bring massive bags and, and we get credit for, and we make sure that it's, you know, not cross-contaminated. So they actually are gonna recycle it. So it's.
Um, one other question, clear, clear, like wine bottles. Um, I, I couldn't tell from the, um, from, from this, I was told clear, um, colored wine glasses should not be mainstream. It'll take it at the, um, transfer center. Is that true?
Any glass that's non-deposit can go in the glass bin at the transfer station.
Oh, it is. Cause I was told, um, through the Connecticut recycle that it had to be clear glass. So if that's not true.
No, that's not true. It can't be stuff like light bulbs or mirrors or stuff like that, but any, any wine bottles, they're all fine.
Okay, that's good to know. Thank you.
Yeah.
So we get rid of one, one of our recycle streams.
Yeah, that's another separate box I have with all the non-refundable glass.
Yeah, you know, it's too bad that, that the waste haulers wouldn't have a special receptacle for clear wrap. And then get them involved with Trex. So, but actually recycle it, not just throw it in the garbage waste stream.
Yeah, no, we're asking too much when we, when we want, want them to do that.
We pitched it to, uh, George a couple of years ago to have a receptacle at the transfer station. So.
You know, it really needs to be advertised more. Cause as soon as I found out, um, from, um, the, about the clear, about the film, I've been telling people, friends of mine, and nobody was aware of it. So we definitely need more education. Definitely.
Yeah.
Yeah. Do we have a link on the transfer station website about film? I think we do. Don't, okay. Mari's shaking her head. Good.
Yep.
I mean, there may only be two people, you know, looking at that or scanning the QR code, but at least it's a place. As we said, you know, the, the kids coming up, you know, in, in twenty years, things will be a lot better in this regard or ten years. But, you know, that's just, these are long-term goals, unfortunately.
All right, um, want to move on here a little bit. Um, one thousand trees for Trumbull brochure. Mel's not here, but, yep. Question?
I am putting together a brochure, uh, after discussing with all what we want on it. We were going to use, um, a different towns, uh, Greenwich Tree Conservancy's brochure, but I think we're gonna do, it'll still be a little different. We had priced out a number of brochures, big mail to every home in Trumbull. And the cost of mailing alone was almost six thousand dollars, not including the brochure itself. So we are not going to do that. We're just gonna have it printed in a certain quantity and have it be made available uh, at events, at town hall, et cetera, et cetera. So I am, you know, just back from vacation and, um, going to get started on it again. So, uh, hopefully we'll have printed pieces by mid-March. That's the goal.
March. All right. Sounds good. And.
Janet has your hand up.
Go ahead. Go right ahead, Janet.
Oh. Am I, I, I haven't muted myself. Okay. Um, I was just wondering if, what the cost of, of, um, a, a poster might be on that, Pam, like in the library and other strategic locations?
Don't know.
Cause nobody, nobody in my community will know about it unless, unless they're told somehow. I'm, I'm gonna tell them, but.
Well, the plan is we're gonna, we were talking about having an event at Twin Brooks on Arbor Day around the grand opening of Twin Brooks Park. By then we'll have hopefully trees in the ground. So we were gonna do a whole media campaign around the program itself, but also that first location, almost an arboretum type setup at Twin Brooks Park. But there's not a lot of time right now to talk about it here. We're gonna, we have a subgroup, Janet, you're happy. I'd love to have you on it to talk about next steps in publicizing it. Uh, we've got a very, um, interested and engaged works and rep director. So it's all good. Like it's, it's, it's actually buttercups and rainbows right now. So I'm really looking forward to working on this.
Well, I'll volunteer to help. Let me know.
Great.
Sounds good.
We actually, I actually know somebody who's in the printing business. I don't know if I could.
Printing is cheap. And mailing is just, this is a bulk rate. It was five thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars to mail it to every household in town. And, um, I think that, that's more than our whole budget on, for the brochure is. So we would hope, we were hoping to do that, but I don't think we're gonna be able to afford it.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
And the ninth sense of page was just to get a, a stack of papers, not distributed. So, uh, but I'll ask John, I'm not sure he does print like that.
You don't need to do, you don't need to ask John. Uh, thanks. Uh, I'm already working with a printer on this.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right. Uh, next on the agenda, I've got under outreach, uh, webpage updates, revisions. Is there anything on that? Hey, Mary.
I think there's a couple tweaks to the recycling drive collection items, but do I give those to you, Bill, or to Patty? I feel like I got lost in that process. Either way. I guess I should have mentioned that. We're collecting hair dryers now at the, and curling irons. Um, what else did we add to the list? I'll think of it later.
I think it was like all kind of bathroom-y, kind of electric stuff that can I go back to? Um, New Jersey, for the lack of a name right now, off the top of my head.
Yeah.
There is.
Yeah.
It's all on the Facebook page, is it? Updates on that?
No, that's what I mean. We need to update the Facebook and the um, town webpage, the link, yeah.
Gotcha. All right.
Um, oh, contacts, that's what it was. The little contact lens, uh, they call them blister packs, that your individual lenses come in. For people who wear dailies or whatever, you're constantly pulling off those.
Okay.
Mari, quick, collecting those?
It's on the list of the items at the monthly recycling drive.
Okay. Uh, next I have the ECDC, anything, uh, I know we were talking about trying to get something into the, the quarterly newsletter. Uh, but I don't know if that quarterly newsletter is still happening, or Ralph, you have any uh, any updates on that?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, uh, I don't know if, uh, it's supposed to be published in March. Uh, I haven't gotten confirmation of that, which is a bit troubling, because it used to be a staple of our communication with the community. Uh, I still think it's going to happen. And I've requested uh, some space to have a sustainability column, if you will. Uh, what I'd like to do is if somebody could write a very short blurb, um, maybe just a couple of paragraphs, pick one. The first paragraph might be what the sustainability team is all about. And the second might be one initiative that's very important. Uh, it'll get us started and I can use that hopefully as a uh, to kickstart the newsletter. So, you know, will I have some content there? So if somebody could send me some information, may, maybe it's, even if it's too long, I'll edit it down. And then I'll give it to Rena and Barrel and suggest that be the uh, March entry for what I hope will be a quarterly uh, sustainability column in the Economic Development Newsletter.
To the, the Thousand Trees would probably be perfect. I don't see Pam anymore. Oh, there she is. Uh, probably perfect for that, depending upon the timing. I don't know if it's, I know your meetings are the beginning of the month. I don't know if it was a shoot for the beginning of March or the end, but, but either, either a um, promo beforehand to let people know what's going on or an after the fact if it comes out late, but I think that would be a great spot to start.
Well, our meetings are the first Tuesday of every month. Um, the uh, the newsletter comes out separate from the meeting, so that can come out anytime. Just if somebody would write up uh, a little information on the uh, hang on just a second, let me try and get rid of this, um. Some information on what the sustainability team is all about and then what the uh, Thousand Trees program is all about. I will hopefully use that to have the commission build a newsletter around that, because we have a lot to report on our own. I just don't have as much enthusiasm for the newsletter as I would have hoped, but I'll keep pushing.
I'll, I'll jot up something quick on both and have the team look at it. And Ralph, now, did you, were you able to follow up with Rena on the cut out the cutlery, whatever we were calling that, Mari? That uh, campaign that we sent to Rena for restaurants?
No, I missed the last meeting. I was traveling. I will call her directly and, and find out and get back to you.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So when you have what you need, what you want, just send me the article and I'll, I'll use that as a another data point to support the newsletter.
Thank you, Ralph and Pam. Um, since we got to Pam, anything new conservation commission related that we should be aware of or discussing?
We've got cuts pond on here, uh, there's nothing there where it's really now the ball is in the court of the uh, the Veterans Center to get the funds that they need. We gave them a planting plan for the bigger buffer areas last month. So whether or not that goes through has, really hinges on whether or not they get the funds for the Veterans Center itself.
Okay.
Yeah, overall looked like the planning plan was, was pretty good. You know, no, in non-invasive, and there is a sufficient buffer between, you know, where people walk and, and the water. Um, and so on, so it looked, looked pretty good, but I'm not the biggest plant expert. I mean, uh, you know, Pam is that, but looking at it from a geological standpoint, runoff, it looked pretty good.
It was all natives. Everything on that planting plan is a native.
What a concept.
All right, and then the last item I have is under our goals for this year. Um, trying to get our working groups uh, more active, getting some more people involved. Um, and I'm right down, right now all I've got down are people who currently volunteered to be on specific working groups. And um, I don't know if we can develop that further, um, but I've got um, Mari had, had volunteered to be on recycling and sustainable youth. Pam volunteered to be on food scraps, pollinator pathway, Thousand Trees and events. Does anybody else want to, um, I don't know how you want to work this, uh, you want to have like somebody being the coordinator of each working group, um, uh, how do you want to do it? Try to basically want to look to find more people, right? Otherwise, it's not a working group, it's a working person.
I don't, I don't necessarily want to run four groups, but I'm happy to, to coordinate in the beginning. So I guess if someone doesn't have the ability to sign up on the Google Drive where this document lives, then just email one of us and say, I want to work on this with y'all. Um, you know, today I got, or yesterday I got something from the Xerxes Society about getting native plants and being part of this thing that they're doing. It would be great to have help with that, so.
I guess I pictured it as like um, point of contact, and Pam, I don't want to obligate you to be that for four groups. But um, I just feel like sometimes, I mean, just little things, but it's just um, inconsistent messaging. Maybe I'm seeing, you know, just making sure with recycling that we're kind of streamlining it and I, I do have questions and I might be guilty of spewing off incorrect information at times as well, but um, I just thought it might be nice if we all know when there's mess emails coming in too, that there's one person that's kind of the point of contact, like Pam, you would be the food scrap person per se. Um, even though I want to help with that project. Um, and then also, um, I envision us maybe publicizing this on social media, that we have a team working on recycling and we have a team working on, and correct me if anyone doesn't want to do that. I mean, we don't want to open it up to hundreds of people, but it seems like there's people that want to get involved, but maybe as a helper, not a leader. And um, and the town's not appointing more people to the team anyway. It's more of if you're attending, you're planning to help with something. So just a little bit more of a focus of how to, how to help, I, that's what I was picturing.
Yeah. Thoughts, people, on how you want to try to do that?
It's kind of like herding cats, in a way.
Yeah, you never know what cats are going to be helpful and which ones are going to be.
No, and I, I, I don't disagree with Mari in terms of getting people who want to help but don't know how. I think that there should be a forum for that, because, you know, we've kind of been the team now for what, three years, four years? It would be great to have more of a community involvement and, you know, it takes a village and more people are involved. We, we've solved some of our problems about spreading the word places. Um, it's just how do you, how do you do, get that done? So I think maybe from my perspective, for the groups I'm working on, kind of have like a an initial meeting with people who want to be involved and then talk about next steps and how to then spread out to larger group.
What do you think? How are we gonna, how are we gonna do that outreach, just on Facebook or?
I think it's a start. We have a pretty robust Facebook following.
Yeah.
Mari?
Uh, do we want to maybe draft something, Pam, about like a post? I mean, not to be so formal, but just so we agree on what we're proposing and just maybe bullet point like four or five projects, including Mary, the um, you know, if we are moving forward with the refill, maybe some, there's one or two people sitting out there that say that I resonates with them and they want to go to some of the restaurants and talk about it, you know, or post some of the posters at each of the locations once it gets going. I mean, just manpower, right?
Like the, the Thousand Trees, we really don't need, at this point, we don't necessarily need the public's help of putting the program together. Um, but for our litter campaign or for recycling or for food scrap campaign, that, that's the kind of thing where we would need hands.
Yeah, yeah, so it's up to you. I mean, Mari and Pam, you're the ones who so far volunteered to at least get things kicked off a little bit, so whatever you want to put on that, whatever you want to put out there is, is up to you. Whatever you think you want to help with the most, then, you know, go right ahead.
And we can wait, Mary, until you hear back on the, um, the refill cup campaign, and then we can decide if you want to add that to the list, if you want.
Super. Good, thank you.
Sounds good. Um, anybody else have any other items they want to? New business or old business or anything?
Well, actually, I would like to jump in and thank you, Mary, for, for your, your discussion. One thing that has been on my heart since, gosh, New Year's Eve twenty twenty-one. This is probably the only New Year's um, resolution I've ever kept, which is to um, reduce and remove bringing in plastic bags into my homes. And so one of the things, we don't have to talk about it now, but one of the things I'd love, like to, you know, just leave on your, your hearts is, you know, when I go to the grocery store to get vegetables, I don't take the plastic bag, because I know where it's going to end up. So, and uh, I do have, you know, the cloth bags, but I don't normally use them, because I always bring my vegetables home and, you know, I wash them. So anyway, just wanted to leave that, that thought with all of you, because I think that's, that's another area where so many people don't even think about it. And it's such an important and, you know, a huge source of, you know, all of that, that stuff um, that is trashed and is adding to the uh, the bad stuff that's happening in our world, so, anyway.
Uh, Randy, is that your hand up there?
Yes, it is, it is. Um, I use those vegetable bags and I absolutely love them. And the first time I found out about it, I was in Virginia at a farmer's market and they were selling them, and I thought that was a good idea, and I noticed the stores are selling them. I was in. Cloth bags? I'm sorry, the cloth bags? Um, I, yeah, I get the, the cotton ones, I, I got.
Thank you.
Excuse me?
Yeah, yeah.
They're great and you can wash them. Um, so maybe the farmer's markets can carry them. I think that's, that's a great thing. Um, I, yeah, I think that's, that's, uh, so the plastic bags you get from the um, from the, that they give for the fruit, um, can that go in the film also?
Yes.
That can go in.
If it's clean.
Right.
You've got to rinse it, yes.
Oh, wow. I, I think probably ninety percent of the people throw that in the trash. But they don't know that. It's education again. Yep, you're right. Absolutely. Right. And I would love to have an effort about, yeah, you can buy these bags that you can use forever rather than using plastic, so.
Right, they make um, mesh bags for vegetables you can buy on Amazon. I have them, but the problem is that most farmers don't know how to do the tear. So what's, what, what is your container? Like Whole Foods will ask you, what is your container? But uh, like Stop and Shop won't, so you end up paying for that mesh bag when you're weighing your broccoli or whatever. So it's not, we're not quite there yet as a society with that.
No, I, I wondered about that. That's a very good point, because when I bring my bags, I put the fruit or the vegetables, they weigh them, and then I put them into my bag. So it's, you know, anyway.
April, April, you had your hand up?
I'm all about reducing plastic anywhere it exists, even if it is recyclable. I don't think it's a good thing for our, our earth, so. Me too.
You know, one quick thing on plastic bags, I have some old Home Depot bags. And if I go there, I will put my pockets sometimes. So if you have plastic bags and you, you know, go to the store, put your stuff in there, bring it home and reuse the plastic bag, I mean, that's all, that's okay.
Mm-hmm.
Reuse them time and time again.
Right.
Because a million years from now, that's what will be left.
Right, yeah. And I, I use tons of my, especially my Price Right bags. I love Price Right. I love my Price Right bags. But I do use them all the time, so, anyway, we just wanted to offer that thought out, because that's been on my heart for a long time, so, anyway. It's been wonderful speaking with all of you and.
All right, all set? Or April, do you have a, one other something? You all done? All right, I think we're out. All right, everybody, thank you very much. We'll see you in a
Thanks, guys.
In a month or sooner.
Everybody.
Right.
So I think just to kind of, what they just said, it sounds like the town needs some definite more educated plastic.
Yeah, yeah, and I'm, I would be delighted to be part of that. So, please put me on that list.
Got it.
Okay.
Me too.
See you guys in two months.